I would like to call the meeting, the special meeting to order. This special meeting is on Tuesday, August 24th at 2:00 PM. Since it is a hybrid meeting, we do have individuals in person and online. The ones that I see online at this point in time are Logan Cunningham, Gerald Dawson, Larry McCallan, and myself. Is there anybody that you see online that I do not see online? Okay, in person, I believe, I thought I saw Chris Hervishon come in.
Chris, Councilmember Hervishon, Councilmember Howard, Councilmember Rodman, and Councilmember Lawson are in the chambers.
All right, so we do have a forum to conduct business. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the scope of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public notice, this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would like a member of council to make a motion and a second to approve this agenda. May I have such a motion? Mr. Dawson makes the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Howard makes the second, duly motioned and seconded. This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Therefore, the agenda is approved. Citizen comments, is there anyone in chamber, in chamber council to make a statement, or is there anybody online who wishes to be heard? I see no reaction, therefore, the citizen comments will be closed. Today, we're going to have a presentation of results, recommendation on the boat landing air study by Brittany Ward, who is our deputy county attorney, and Neil Desai from our public works as the director. So I will turn that portion of the meeting over to Brittany.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, let me go first. I need to counsel a brief update about one thing that's been ongoing for over a week now. Munis, our software platform that allows us to take money and receipt money, ran an update a little over a week ago on our system and proceeded to shut us down for over a week from collecting money. So we have not, we have not collected money at the county for a little over a week. We've been working with them. Very poor customer service out of Munis that we received. Patrick Hill and the IT team have done an excellent job trying to get this corrected. We are about 99% functional as of this afternoon. We are a couple of hundred permits behind, so if you all get calls, we have done everything we can to work with Munis to get, get us back online. And if you'll just ask your constituents to be patient with us while we deal with the backlog, I'd be grateful. So Mr. Desai is under the weather, so it'll actually be Brittany Ward and Jared Fralix today. So I'll turn it over to Brittany now.
Okay.
Good afternoon, councilor. Give me just a moment to share my screen with you. Similar to last week's real property presentation, this is set up the same way. I provided everyone with a summary sheet. So the presentation online, the PowerPoint's going to be able to provide you reference to the map of locations of the boat landings, as well as a visual aspect of its current condition. First one we're going to look at today is Brickyard Point. This is on Ladies Island. The property is owned by the White family. We are currently maintaining the property. And again, Jared and Neil's input on this is going to be the maintenance side of it. So if you have any questions, we can wait for him to answer those for you. As far as the ownership or the interest in the property, Brickyard Boat Landing is owned by the family. And at this time, we are maintaining it via an agreement that was put in place for restrictive easement with the Department of the Navy. There was some type of litigation that was between the Navy and the family regarding the air rights. And in that restrictive easement, it allowed for the dock there at Brickyard to be used for public purpose, which is when the county stepped in. The county is not part of that agreement. We were named in it, but we are not signatories to the agreement. So the position on this one, in order to secure the interests we have in the property, to continue the maintenance on that, it would be my perspective that we need to enter into another agreement with the family in order to solidify that use and not make us a party to the agreement with the Navy. Any questions on that?
There, I will add to that. This, this landing is in need of some major repair. We had barricaded this landing at some point, or at least the ramp, I believe, because of a big hole in the middle of the ramp some time ago. The community kept removing the barricades, so they are using it, but it does, there is a severe drop off in the middle of that. So if council does desire us to proceed on with this, we will have to do some immediate maintenance as a result of entering into the agreement to correct those issues, which is, we're okay doing. I just wanted you all to be aware of that.
Has the White family indicated they wish to contain, continue ownership of this, or would be, or would they be amenable to selling?
We have not reached out to the White family at this time. Again, this presentation is for purposes of making those decisions. So at this point, we are working under the restrictive easement with the Department of Navy.
Okay.
Yeah, Brittany, I have a couple, just a couple of quick questions. Brittany, Larry McCallan here, being an urban dweller most of my life, having a limited nautical background, I listen to all these things that people say landings, piers, and maintenance, no ownership. What are we doing here? When we talk about all of these different concepts that we are engaged in with people in a variety of locations where there's a landing or a dock here, we don't own it, but we take care of it. How do people get there? And what's the agreement all about? And how long have these things been in agreement? And what can we do about it, essentially? Now, I know the reason for this presentation is to come to those conclusions, but I don't, I'm kind of interested in hearing a little more about the background of these things and how we got where we are, why we're doing what we're doing, and if we should continue to do it. I don't understand how we maintain something we don't own, but why we do that, or how it got there in the first place. So if anybody can shed any light, it doesn't have to be you on that with regard to a historical perspective, if it doesn't take too much time, I'd sure like to hear it.
I can tell you that the restrictive easement was placed on this one in 2015. It's my understanding that we have been maintaining it prior to that. I can't address the specific timeframe, but I'll let Jared chime in on that.
I can't answer all of the history question, but I can answer, this is very similar to our legacy dirt roads. They're dirt roads that we've been maintaining for a period of time, and through that process have just succumbed all that maintenance. So as far as when it actually occurred, or what was the mechanism that made it occur that we started maintenance, I can't answer that. I could only make an assumption that at some point, somebody called somebody and, and we showed up and started maintaining it.
But we don't own it. It's not our dock.
That is correct.
Whatever you call it.
That is correct.
Okay, it's not on our property, but we take care of it so that Beaufort County residents can use it. And people are accessing private property to get on the dock that we maintain that we don't own. Is that clear? I mean, is that pretty correct?
That is exactly why we're here today.
Yeah.
It's to clear up all of these issues that have come to fruition.
There, there's a tremendous liability issue on our, our part for something that we don't own, allowing the public to go on property that we don't own. If somebody gets hurt, obviously, we're going to be held responsible. So this, this is a hot button topic as to whether we should continue maintaining any facility. I don't care what it is, any facility that we do not have clear title to it because of our litigious society that we're in and the burden it puts on us to try and do the right thing. This, this is definitely a problem.
And I think both of you just pointed out, what I want to make sure we're being clear about here today is that we, we need to move forward and secure any interest that we do have in these properties. So ownership may be an issue in some of these moving forward. Specifically, there's two on here that would probably bring the exact same questions. And that's what we're here to do.
So the, the thing that we're looking at right now, the dock is in the background there. That's the dock we're maintaining.
Landing, yeah.
Landing.
Oh, wait a minute. That's what I don't understand. What's a landing? What's a dock? And what's a pier? And where do you put boats on board? And where do you fish from? What is all of this?
I'll let Jared, but I could answer, but I'll let the engineer do that.
So the landing is that-
It's like when I came down here and I had to learn how to pull a cornhole. I never heard of cornholes.
Yeah, just so we're all using the same terminology. So the landing is the actual boat ramp that you back down. The pier is the dock that you walk out. Some piers only have a, a straight dock. Some of them actually have a T or, or a finger where you can dock up to. So those are the basic terminology. And then the boat, boat ramp is obviously the landing as well. Landing is probably more inclusive. Let me rephrase that. The landing is the ramp, the pier, and everything, the parking at large. The ramp is the downward slope, and then the pier is the, the walking out and you tie your boat to.
So, so what we are looking at is landing, and we have nothing. We have no ownership. We don't own the concrete. We don't own the land. We don't own any parking where that vehicle is and its boat trailer is. We don't own the road. We're just maintaining this.
We do not have a-
Go ahead, Brittany.
We do not have a fee. Simple interest in this landing. I, I believe there is some type of interest, being the fact that we have maintained it. And again, there is a restrictive easement agreement with the Navy whereby the county is named in it. But I'll repeat that we're not a party to it. So this is the portion that we're trying to clean up here today is whether you want to move forward and continue to have public access on this property and allow citizens to use the boat landing and go into an agreement with the Whites separately so that we can have clear understanding of all the obligations of parties.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go right ahead. I can't see you, so just jump in. When there's something on the screen, I cannot see.
I'd like to do next if my clue is stimming.
Yes.
On Ladies Island, public boat, I know this isn't owned by us, but with public landings, how far away is the closest one to this one? Is there any close by? I don't think there are, are there? On Ladies Island?
Yeah, I think probably Whitehall is the next closest.
Whitehall would be the next closest one, which is always busy.
It's a pretty, this is pretty far out.
And next, the restrictive easement, I don't understand if a county didn't sign to it. What is, what is between the White family and Department of Navy? And why is the county even in the document? Do we, what year was that done?
That was in 2015.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll give you all a little more background because I have personal knowledge of this because your former county attorney, Mr. Lad Howe, uses this boat landing. So he's, he's giving me the background on it. Apparently, when this restrictive easement was entered into, someone went out and built the boat landing on the White property, didn't even talk to the Whites about doing it. They just did it.
Somebody from the county.
It may have been from the DOD and did it, and the county started maintaining it. We have no agreement. It's my understanding that the Whites do not want to sell the property. They don't want to do anything with it. There might be a possibility that we can get an agreement with them. But these are the complications that come up with all of these landings, ramps, piers, that you're going to be hearing about today. And then, more importantly, later on, you're going to be here for Mr. Atkinson on some recreation centers that we're doing a similar thing for. We just need direction from you all on what you all would like for us to do with these. My recommendation from a county standpoint is that we go through the agreement process to secure our interest in these so that we can maintain them without any difficulty. Because, you know, you have a boat landing there. Those are high commodities in an area like Beaufort County. I would not recommend to you all that you abandon the maintenance on any of these facilities and that you instruct staff to go through whatever process is necessary to secure our interest in continuing maintenance of these particular things and then spend the money to maintain them. to maintain them.
As of recent, northern Beaufort County, and I hate to, you know, bring that up, but this one I know is used by people on Ladies Island, not in this, and some of my constituents, even though they don't live on Ladies Island, is used. I'd hate to just throw it out because we don't want to work on procuring the right way to maintain it. I would, I would, I would recommend we go through the right procedures so that we can maintain it because they're only, I mean, White Hall is always heavily used and overcrowded, and it needs to be some relief for that somewhere. That's my two cents worth.
Okay, that's a fair point. York, you were next, and then Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to address this as best I know, trying to sort of comment on my answer to some of the things that Matt Harry. This is, this property is owned by the Whites. It's been in their families for years. And actually, split several homes in this area. I would consider this a legacy dock, just like we have a legacy road. And however, it's one of these docks that are very active. It's a landing rather, it's very active. If we close this, it will cause all kinds of problems for the Whites, because you're not going to stop the boats from going to this dock. So whatever arrangement we can work out, maintain our liability coverage on this property, I think we need to go ahead and consider that. And there are probably more legacy dock landing just like this. Charlie Hay, basically, with Senator Waddell, probably did a lot of these docks back in the days. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I just, two things. One is, I guess we need to decide how we're going to, if we just go through these and we gather information, or we're going to sit and discuss each one of them because it's going to take forever if we discuss each one of them. So we need some direction on how you want us to handle each of these as we go through. But I think we need as many landings as we can. Beaufort County is not going to get any smaller in size, and if anything, waterfront property is becoming less and less and less. So whatever we can do to secure things in the, in the long run, we actually need to add more landings and purchase more property and make more things available for the, for the future. So again, I'm not sure what staff was looking for, for us to say, go ahead and, and secure, whatever we need to secure and to do the things we got to do liability wise and, you know, all that, so.
Yeah, my.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, go ahead, Gerald.
To Mark's point, Beaufort County is surrounded by water, and we need every access to the water as we possibly can get. As Mark stated, we need to look for additional properties where we can install boat ramps on parking lots so that, so that we don't have overcrowding at some of the other boat ramps. And so whatever it takes to maintain this, whatever it takes for us to have a, have a part in the operation of this boat ramp as well as some others, let us be mindful as we go through the process that you're going to see a lot of this because people need access to the water. That's, that's the summertime, and as well as summertime even in the winter, that's the, that's recreation for, for the residents here in Beaufort County. So whatever maintenance agreement we have to work out with in this boat ramp as well, as well as any of the others that we go through after this, let us be mindful that we, we are, Beaufort County, we are in need of additional boat ramps so that we don't have overcrowding at some of the boat ramps that we, that we utilize now.
Okay, now, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions that I want to proactively ask for all the, all the properties. Number one, how many people estimated use it? What's the cost to repair it? And then what's the yearly cost to maintain it?
I can answer a couple of those. On the, how many people use that? We don't have a good count of that. But I'll answer the other two, then come back to that one. The cost to repair is approximately $50,000. We've just repaired a similar boat ramp that had similar issues, so we feel pretty confident on that number. And then just to repair in this, or maintain in this condition is approximately $5,000 a year. However, this condition is similar to our dirt roads in a legacy status. We are only maintaining, we are not making improvements since the ownership issue is out there. So we're not pouring extra funds into this to bring it up to standards that other boat ramps may be. As far as how many people are using this, and this answers other questions that were discussed as far as we need more boat ramps, or what do we need? We are in the process right now, we have advertisement out for a master plan for our boat ramps. So we have a consultant that we're working, that, we had two consultants propose. We're working with the highest bidder on that to come to a fee to bring to committee, hopefully in September at PFC. And in that evaluation, they're going to assess the conditions of the existing boat ramps, the recommendations of improvements to be made, also look at, do we have the right number of boat ramps? Should we have more? Should we have less? Are they in the right locations? Do we have two or three that are in close proximity that maybe we need to let go of one and buy another one elsewhere? So they're going to take a holistic view as well as do some assessment on how many people are using our boat ramps, the economic impact that that has. All that's going to be encompassed in the master plan.
To that point, if this one's in bad shape, maybe not that many people are using it right now, but maybe people did in the past, will this one and some of the others that there's no clear ownership be in that study?
Yeah, all the ones that are under maintenance right now will, are included in that scoop.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I think this was a healthy debate about this one, that we, from here, we can give some direction about this particular one, but it may be applicable to everyone we're going to discuss. From what I hear, one, we don't own anything here. Two, because we don't own anything here, we have a tremendous liability on our hand. In order to eliminate that liability, we have to do something about ownership of the boat landing itself, whether we enter into a lease agreement, a purchase agreement, some sort of meeting of the minds, however we want to phrase that, unless we have some authority to control that boat landing, we're using taxpayer dollars on private property. That's inappropriate. Is that a fair summary of what we've been discussing?
I think that is a fair summary. And to Councilman Lawson, what's your question was, what are we asking? We're asking for clear direction, pursue ownership interest or an agreement of such, and which we'll do, or don't pursue it and, and let's get out of this boat ramp business at this particular location.
Well, clearly, because of what was stated, the number of boat landings that we have, it's a precious commodity. I don't see the reason just because we don't own this, that we shouldn't pursue means and methods of getting control of this. So that would be my opinion. What say the rest of the council members as to a direction on this one?
I concur.
But I concur.
And I do want to make it clear, moving forward for this, for purposes of this conversation, this presentation, it may be that we don't have a fee simple interest in these properties, meaning that we do not have a deed in hand recorded at the register of deeds. But I do believe that there would be an argument on any, if not all of these, that we do have some type of interest that we need to secure.
Yes, and however you go about securing that interest for us, we're going to leave that in your capable hands. Maybe it is a long-term lease agreement.
Understood.
You know, any, anything like that, it will be in your capable of hands. One final point, in looking at the property that's on the screen to the left, looks like a lot of concrete debris. Do we know how that debris got there? Is it our responsibility at all?
I do want to be clear, and I will have to put in here because it is copyrighted, this is a Google Maps, so I am unsure of when this was exactly taken. So I can, I'll lean to engineering to tell me whether that concrete's still there or not.
I don't know if it's there or not, but I can, again, Neil is on the data data of this, and I can coordinate with Neil, and if he has an answer, I can let everybody know where that came from, who it belongs to, but I don't have an answer at the moment.
Right. Okay. All right, then, then let's move on, if that's okay with everybody. We now know what each of these things that they will talk about. And going forward, if Port Royal Sands Boat Landing is in the same condition as the Brickyard Boat Landing, then what we just applied to the Brickyard Boat Landing is applicable to Port Royal Sands Boat Landing.
We have had conversations with the town regarding the Sands Boat Landing. As I'm sure many of you, not all, are aware, they're having conversations with this neighboring property owner, determining what properties each party there even owns. We have, again, talked to the town, discussed with them the different options. It is more than likely that the town actually owns the property, and we have suggested several different ways of moving forward on it in order to either solidify the fact that the county is going to continue the maintenance, or allow for the town the option to take that over. So we are discussing that one as well.
Okay, so we don't own it. Port Royal does. The question is, do we maintain it with an agreement with Port Royal, or do we turn it over entirely to Port Royal and say, you maintain it? Is that a fair understanding?
Yes.
Okay, everybody in agreement with that one?
Can I have just a question? I hear the word landing. Do we have a pier here as well on this landing that we have?
There, there is a small pier there, I believe.
And we know who owns that?
This is all on the same piece of parcel, the same parcel.
But do we know, so, so the people who own the parcel own the ramp and the pier, and we maintain the ramp and the pier?
That is correct.
And the park? Who own that pier and they fish from it and things like that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, here, we're going to work out with the town of Port Royal as to who's going to continue to maintain this, and whether or not it's in our interest to do it, or it's better served by the town of Port Royal. Is that okay by everyone?
And this one, just so that everybody's aware again about numbers, this one in the yearly approximate cost for just the maintenance of it is around $20,000.
Gotcha.
And this one, it's probably used all the time. I mean, it's used all the time by lots and lots of people. Not, and a lot of them not even residents of Beaufort County.
Yeah, one thing also on these, again, back to the kind of legacy comparison with the dirt roads, is we have funding in our budget, general funding for maintenance. So new cleats, new small repairs, new stone. This section actually has a stone parking lot as well, new striping, but not, we don't have anything budgeted in our general fund for long-term capital improvements. So especially with the status of these as being unclear, if we had the capital outlay, again, we would, we would still just be using maintenance at this point. And this probably, this one more than others is probably, is well-used, is one of the higher-use ones. It also, I would dare to guess, is probably one of the lower ones. It gets flooded on a semi-routine basis.
Yep.
And which is, causes havoc on the pavement and also on the gravel parking lot, so.
Jared, when we, when we do these, we do the regular maintenance on this, someone inspecting it and filing a report, whether it's going to fall down or not?
Yeah, our, we have our crews that go out there weekly to maintain the, the grass and the trash, and then we do a quarterly report. In addition, if we see something on the spot, we'll do a report and put that in our records as well.
So, and currently, there is no formal agreement for maintaining this. This is just because it's a legacy.
That is correct.
Okay, now, do we have any idea how long we've been maintaining this one?
I do not have that information.
Okay. You know, my, my theory is, and just my theory, is these came about as legacy because, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago, these particular docks were in areas where whatever the municipality inclusion was, or whoever had it, did not have the wherewithal, the county had to maintain it. So the county began maintaining it because it was the right thing to do, and it's just continued on forever. And even though, you know, the municipalities have grown to the point where they could do it, it's just been easy for us to do it.
Easy for them to let us through.
Correct, correct. That doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. So you understand what you're, we're asking you to do on the Port Royal Sands Boat Landing?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to the Rust Point Boat Landing.
Could just, I'm not sure that we're clear on that because I just heard two people say that the town should, should take it over.
Oh, that's, we said they're going to be in negotiations.
Well, maybe.
It is best suited to do this.
All right, let's leave it at that. And also, the possibility of Gregos may own it, which is a private entity.
It is possible Gregos might own it as well.
Right.
Correct, correct.
And not be simple is all I'm saying.
Right, the direction they have to take is to solidify the formal ownership and solidify if in fact, the town of Port Royal does in fact own this, should they be maintaining this, or should the county be maintaining this?
That was part of our conversation with the town, was that they needed to figure out if they owned it or if Gregos owned it. I think that's up to the town to decide their own ownership of it. I know we definitively, the county, does not own it.
As part of our, as part of our maintenance, have we installed those porta potties?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So to the maintenance and the negotiation component, we can negotiate it, but it sounds like, or I guess this is a question, is the point of negotiation from the county to the town, that the, the town maintain it? Is that the point that we'd like to be negotiated? Or am I understanding that correctly?
Well, if, if in fact, the town owns it and we're maintaining it, okay, we should have an agreement with them that they're going to pay us to maintain their property. That seems reasonable.
Well, I think probably what we're going to have to do here in this particular case is, once we determine the ownership, I think we're going to have to have additional discussions with the town representatives. And one of the things that we've got to do, in my opinion, for any of these that we're going to enter into an agreements with, then we need to treat everyone equally. I understand town of Port Royal may own a, a piece of property. I don't know that it would be fair to tell another private owner, well, we're going to maintain your boat ramp, but you don't have to pay anything, but then tell the town of Port Royal that, you know, we're going to maintain your boat ramp, but you've got to pay us to maintain it. So we will continue that discussion with, with town of Port Royal, and once we determine the ownership, we will talk to them about how they want to proceed from an agreement standpoint. Either, either they take over maintenance, or we continue maintenance through some formal agreement, and then we'll recommend that back to you once we finish that.
Okay. Okay. We're okay to move on now to Rust Point?
So the next is Rust Point over on Hunting Island. This one was actually conveyed back in the 1930s to the state. They, to this day, still currently own it. Google Maps does not have the ability to go car view or down lower, so you can see here, there is a, I want to make sure I use the right word, a dock, because you can't bring a boat up to it. It is also my understanding, there's a landing here, a boat ramp here, so you can put boats into the water. Again, this one is definitively owned by the state as it is in a park. It would be our suggestion that we speak with the state and have them take it over, unless they are willing to provide us some other type of interest in the property that's to our benefit.
So are we maintaining this one, Brittany?
Yes.
Okay.
This one is approximately $10,000 a year to maintain.
So the state owns it, it's in a state park, county's paying maintenance.
Yep.
Okay.
Good deal for the state.
Any questions on this one?
Nope. Nope.
The next is going to be the Wallace Boat Landing. This one is different than the previous three. There is no government entity involved in this one. I, I'll see that. This one is actually off of a right-of-way. There is a 50-foot right-of-way that is definitive in this boat landing associated with it. The issue here is that the part of the road, you can see there's a fence to the left, which is a private homeowner to the right, is owned by an HOA. You come down here, you're going down this drive on the right-of-way, and then you come to the boat ramp. The boat ramp portion of this is what is giving us a little bit of concern. And again, I believe this is simply securing our interest in the property. There is no actual deed recorded that says that we have fee simple ownership of this portion. But again, it is off of our right-of-way. And it, our interest starts where the right-of-way ends. So that's where the, the issue is. Am I explaining that clearly? Okay, so you have the right-of-way, which is definitive. You can see on multiple surveys, there's a 50-foot right-of-way where the state has a road. Where the state road ends is where our concern starts because there is not a definitive fee simple ownership recorded that says Beaufort County owns this boat ramp.
So is there, there a way to see where the state road ends?
There, if you look, if you look at surveys of this area, I'm going to suggest that it ends, see where that fence line is, I'm not sure.
To the left, right there?
The left, there is a fence. On surveys for the properties on either side of this right-of-way, it does appear that the state road ends approximately where that fence line ends.
Okay.
And again, this is the county. If we're going to clean it up, I say we clean up all of it. And we secure our interest in this boat landing so that there isn't any dispute to it. I, I'm not going to state that anybody else has fee simple ownership to it because again, I think it's very unclear as to where the road ends and our interest begins.
Can you remind me where this one is?
I will back up. And you can see here, it's Sam Doyle Drive, right here, in St. Helena area.
Yep, okay.
Brittany, I missed it. Who owns the, the property around there?
The property around, to the left where that fence is. And I apologize, I can go back.
Capers Creek Island, I just popped up, Capers Creek Island Property Owners Association.
Yes, so there is a private owner to the left where that fence is. And then to the right, this property appears to be an HOA. I'm not sure what they use this parcel for. You can see there, there's a sale sign. I did look it up, and it does appear to be for sale. But again, I'm not sure what the HOA's purpose is for it. I did not look into that.
Yeah, just the association owns the actual property around the landing.
Hoist and roast.
And there doesn't appear to be any kind of parking once you launch your boat.
Right. Unless you're pulling that lot.
I believe over here, there might be.
There is some parking, there is some parking, yes.
Jared's telling me that there, that typically what happens is they put their boats in and they park along the right-of-way because that is a large right-of-way right there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Everybody understand what we're going to do for this one? It's going to be determining from where the state end, road ends, all the way down to the boat landing as to what our interests are in that. Okay.
And again, I think this one's pretty clear. We'll just be asserting our rights that we more than like, our interest that we already more than likely. So the next one is going to be the Wimby. And this is up in the Lobico area. You can see at the end of Wimby Landing Road. This one's a little bit more complicated as far as how the history goes on it. The family, I don't want to click out. It was owned by several family members. Then there was probate, a trust was created. There was a lot of people involved in this ownership. And talking with Mark Rosenell previously, he gave me a little bit of historical background that I can't find recorded. At that time, when we put in this, or established this boat landing, the family had provided, I guess, a verbal ownership, or verbal access to it. But again, we clearly have been maintaining it for quite some time. And so we're asking on this one as well to proceed to secure the interest that we have in the property as far as maintaining it and claiming it as a boat landing for several years now.
This is the one we had the handicap access.
I believe so, yes.
So this is more than a landing. This is also a pier that's in dis, somewhat disrepair. And this is the, just the one that someone's been asking for ADA access for four or five years and hasn't gotten it?
That is correct.
And it is, it is behind the green sign? That's where everything is?
Yes, that's where the boat ramp is, and then the pier is straight.
Okay.
And this pier is not going to cost a million dollars to fix, is that what I heard?
Yes, there's several alternatives, but in the upwards of a million dollars depending on the alternative selected. So in just some background information, this is very similar to the Broad River Fishing Pier, that it's a pier that we inherited, and it has a old railroad trestle, and it's a deteriorating pier. So we do annual inspections to maintain the, to inspect the structural deficiency. And in doing so, our last report was done in 2019, and the, basically, the, the pier moved from fair to serious as far as its overall condition. From that, in 2020, we did a study of this. And out of that study, there were six options, or seven options, which went from do nothing, which was not really warranted because of the, the safety component, all the way to rehab the underside, replace the deck, rehab it and replace it with aluminum deck or a wooden deck, remove and replace altogether, demolish and replace with a wooden pier. Each of them had their alternatives, but it ranged from several hundred thousand to one and a half million dollars depending on the alternative selected. So with that, currently, the last 25 feet of the pier has been, has been described as structurally deficient. So we have closed off the last 25 feet in its current condition. And due to the condition of the pier and the legacy status, we have not poured into capital investment, i.e. a handicap ramp or other any capital outlays for the pier or the landing. Such is the condition with the handicap ramp, so.
And this is being used on a regular basis at this point in time?
Yes. Again, it has steps, so it's not ADA accessible as far as the pier.
No, I understand that, but, but all the deficiencies that you have declared that this has, and the fact that we really don't know who owns it, we're maintaining it. Our liability is tremendous here. Should somebody who uses this on a regular basis get hurt?
Yes, but we are, we're maintaining it. It is in fair and optimal condition. It's just not in a excellent condition. So we have shut down the only portion that has been deemed satisfactorily unsafe, which is the last 25 feet.
Hey, Gerald, yeah, let me just say that this is an old bridge that we cannot fix. So eventually, it's just going to, it either needs to be demolished, or we need to get rid of it and build something.
Five or six alternatives, if we do a full rehab, we're only expanding the life of up to 25 years. So we're going to be in this situation whether we pour money into it now or later. If we demo it, it's a $600,000 to $800,000 just to demo it. And then should we choose to build a timber pier, which was the recommended out of the report, about 300 feet, about 11 or 12 foot wide, that would cost about $315,000. And that would have a life expectancy of about 50 years. So that was what was recommended in the report. Do nothing really was not an alternative because of the safety factor.
But it's, it's very clear that we need to secure interest in this property before we start pouring money into this.
Can I ask a question after this?
Go ahead.
Is this one in the master plan study to be too?
This will be included in the study as well.
Okay. But the only, as far as getting an ADA compliant, would take demolition, rebuild, or?
Or improvement.
$1.5 million or?
Well, if, if you made the improvements there today, as it is in its current, obviously, a ramp of some, some type of ramp would be required. Also, if we make it ADA accessible, we would also need handicap parking in the parking lot, a concrete pad for that. So there'd be a couple of different improvements that would be required to bring it all the way up to ADA accessibility.
Thank you.
I reckon.
Logan, go ahead. Yeah, is there any way Eric could touch base on the individuals that were willing to help us out with at least just getting a ramp in there with our disclosure we talked about yesterday?
Yeah, so the recommendation to you all today would be to, if you all want to proceed on with providing handicap accessibility to this pier, is that first of all, you deal with the interest, county interest in the property because we do not, to Jared's earlier point, we do not make improvements to these properties. We just maintain them. So we'd, you know, we would clean that up and secure our interest in the property. And then at that particular point, we could work with the entity that has rec, or has volunteered to construct handicap accessibility there, enter into an agreement with them, get you all to approve that, and then handle the handicap accessibility. But you need to understand that that's a short-term solution pending future studies. And that's why I've been communicating to everyone that we needed to wait until this meeting so that we have direction on the ADA capability so that you all can understand the full issues with all the things associated with doing those improvements.
And by the way, we haven't talked about ADA compliance at any other of these boat landings. This can't be just the only one that has a problem. Every single one of those boat landings may have ADA compliance issues.
And that'll be something that's assessed in the master.
The only one that has steps, Chairman. The others are ramps or are leveled to the ground like over at.
They, they may, they may well be ramps, but that doesn't mean they're ADA compliant.
Well, it also doesn't mean that they aren't as well because, you know, there are some, there are some limitations on ADA as it applies to park and rec facilities that are in open areas where that capability is not otherwise able to be provided. So I would just encourage council to be careful about stating those things. We, we don't know that they're in compliance, we don't know that they're out of compliance. So we do have a request here. Someone made a Facebook posting that has generated a lot of, a lot of interest. We are looking at, into it as a staff as to what can be done with it so that we can make a full recommendation to council. We're doing that today. And if you all want us to proceed on with providing ADA capabilities to this due to that Facebook post, we're happy to do that, but we need to secure our interest in the property first before we spend any kind of capital money and add things to this property that we're going to need to maintain. That would be our recommendation.
Okay, go ahead, Jared.
Eric, if I might ask, the volunteer who is going to construct the handicap ramp, that's, that's cost-free as far as the county's concerned? It's not going to cost the county any?
Yeah, they did volunteer to build the ramp with the materials and labor. However, there's, there's also, in order for them to build the ramp, one, you guys have to approve that improvement, as Eric mentioned. But also, there's, there's some other concerns that, one, we need an agreement with them. They'll need a building permit since it's a private entity doing work on our, on our facilities. We'll need a indemnity clause. There's just a, a couple of other hurdles that we'd have to work through to work with the community group.
How long will it be before we get the consultant's report?
Probably about six months or so. Again, we're, we plan to bring their proposal and fee and contract to PFC in September. And then we'll kick them off with a notice proceed to start their work.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would recommend that we go ahead and secure the county's interest in this.
Oh, absolutely, that this should be done.
And, and then move forward with the volunteer constructing the ramp.
I'll check in on this.
And then after we report, at the consultant's report, recommend that we demolish the whole fishing pier and construct a new one, and then we'll go that route.
Yes, agreed.
Okay.
Okay, last one, the Jenkins Island Boat Landing.
Yes, Jenkins Island. This is off of 278 on Hilton Head. This boat landing, excuse me, I want to, this is a dock, or pier. This pier, and let me bring up the right map, is at the end of Jenkins Road. Jenkins Road is a state-owned road. The county does not have ownership of this parking lot that you're seeing here. We have built and maintained this pier that does have a floating dock at the end of it, which I do believe also allows for boats to be pulled up on. I apologize, that was Neil's part of this presentation. So what we have done is, we do have records that show that the county financed for this pier and this dock to be built. And again, we do not have a fee simple interest in this property. It is my understanding that we are in conversations with SC DOT in order to obtain an interest in the road. And I will let Jared, as he's anxiously getting up, speak on this one.
So there was a petition from a private entity for this road to be turned over as a private road to DOT. As a, as a rule of thumb, the DOT first offers it to the local jurisdiction as first right of refusal. So there is an opportunity for us to gain control of this road and right-of-way. And pursuant to, to county's direct, or council's direction, we can make, that is a transfer request. It's a pretty simple form from DOT for them to transfer. I think they're in the business of making that form, that form pretty simple so they can transfer as many roads out as they can. But anyhow, so pending a direction from council, we could secure the interest of that road leading up to the pier.
I have a question about this road and where it takes us. Is this the end of the road that we're seeing here? Or is there another parking lot further down there? And if there is, how do you get to it?
No, this is the end of the road. It actually, there is a marina and a restaurant and an RV park. So it kind of does a U-turn right there at the end. You can't quite see it. I think it's actually to the left before you get there, yeah. So there's the kind of turnaround into the RV part slash marina slash restaurant. And then our interest is, is straightforward. So again, the road right-of-way, we'd have to coordinate with DOT as on, on Wallace, I believe, where the actual right-of-way ends and the interest to the pier slash parking area would begin. But we do have an opportunity to gain control of the Jenkins Road should it be desired.
Okay, questions about this. There's, when you go down that left there and you go into that restaurant, there's a big parking lot there that obviously we don't own. And there seems to be a business being conducted on the pier there that we don't own. So the pier that we're talking about, that we maintain and have built, is just at the end of this little right-of-way, is that right? The thing, that gray thing going out into the water, is that the pier we're talking about?
That's right, there is an additional pier. If you look past the vehicle, there you go. You can see the boat ramp and a pier or dock down there. Does, that belongs to the private entity, to the restaurant.
I want to, I want to point out, I think you can see it, hopefully can on your screen, my cursor, right behind these. Right behind these jet skis, there's a fence and there's a small building.
Yep.
That's a, I'm not going to say that's the definitive boundary line, but that's where the other businesses start as far as use, use of this separate dock and pier area.
And we have nothing to do with that, we don't maintain that, we didn't build it.
That's all privately owned.
You can, you can see the ramp right here at the base of this car, that's where our owner, where our maintenance starts.
Okay, because a lot of the constituents that are calling and complaining about lack of access to the parking lot are actually talking about lack of access to the parking lot that joins this, this pier. And that's not our parking lot, that's owned by someone else, private property.
That is correct.
Now, all around the road right of way, the DOT right of way, the county owns, or excuse me, the town owns the property to the left of that wooden fence there in the picture. They own all the property on the left. And then once you get past the RV part, they own all the property on both sides of the road, all the way up to 278.
Okay, I got it, Neil, and that makes, that really changes everything with regard to this, because that private, that business, there's so much controversy surrounding that business at this point. But it's all seems now to be a false flag, because we have nothing to do with any of those businesses, because none of that is county property, and we haven't built any of those piers or docks, however you want to refer to them. And if we were going to do anything there to help citizens use our pier, we might be able to negotiate something with the town with regard to that land on the other side of that, that small wooden fence there, yeah.
That is all owned by the town.
And also, if you go back to the road, you can see people are parking on the left and right side of the road. This is all within the current DOT right of way. So if we were to take ownership of the road, then that would be for the county to decide too. Should we continue to allow for that parking to take place, or should that be a protected shoulder? So that, then we would be in, as you're kind of describing, in the parking business if we allowed parking on, street parking there on the road.
Yeah, well, if we would have had some kind of agreement with the town, diagonal parking, you put in a, an imperious lot over there with good drainage, that may solve the problem for the citizens who are saying, there's never anywhere to park to get access to the county maintained pier. I think a lot of them mistakenly believe the county maintained pier is one that's privately owned. And I think that's the nature of their complaint, because that parking lot is always full of people who are using that sea monkey business.
And Larry.
The residents think that's a county lot, and they don't understand why they can't park there and use our pier. They may not even be talking about our pier, because what we're looking at is a relatively simple kind of pier out into the water that people can stand on and fish from, right?
And yeah, and Larry, let me, let me jump in real quick and say that the, there are two entities there, not, it's not just the RV park. The RV park owns the RV park, plus they had got a swimming pool and a community center. And then Turner's Marina then owns a portion of that. So the, the issue has been that, that people going to Turner's Marina has been parking along the road and taking up most of the parking, because he does not have enough parking for his business entities.
Who owns where the jet skis are?
That's Turner's Marina.
Is that his property?
Yes.
Yes.
Where the jet skis are on land you're talking about, the ones that are parched on land?
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, then how do you get to the boat ramp? It doesn't look like there's space enough for you to get around those two pegs that start the delineation of going onto the pier. How does one back their trailer down to, to get that boat landed?
You go in the.
Yeah, there's a boat ramp right there.
You went to the private entrance, it's on the other side of that fence. So you would actually enter through where you saw the RV entrance, you would enter there, take a right, go through the parking lot, and the boat, that boat landing is a private, on the private property.
But is a county boat landing?
No.
No, okay, so we have nothing to do with that boat landing.
No, we are only.
We just have the pier, gotcha.
All we own is that pier right in front of the car, or we maintain.
I have to tell you, just doing this has cleared up so much in my mind about all the nature of complaints we're getting. And this permits, restrooms, and every other thing, this has finally become clear, because I have to tell you, I went over there a dozen times and I never saw that county pier, because I make the left and go into the other parking lot. So thank you very much for this, I appreciate it.
Okay, Logan, you had a question.
An interactive map would help some, at some point.
If you guys remember when we were talking about Buckingham Landing, and I was talking to, I believe, their lawyer and asking about another lawsuit or another location that we were looking to go to. Am I correct that this is the same property that the lawyer that's representing Buckingham Landing also has a lawsuit going on here in the RV park and parking for the Turner's Marina?
I'm not sure.
Possibly.
We're not a party to that, right?
They're not a party to that litigation, there is some pending litigation to my understanding.
Correct, correct.
I'm not even sure I want to use the term litigation, because I'm not sure if it's gone that far. I am aware of a dispute on a private citizen level that the county is not a party to.
So the only reason I bring that up is because we had people from Buckingham Landing recommend Jenkins as a place that we should move that ferry to, but their representation has already, and another issue in the other area that they want us to go to, I just want to throw that out there and make sure that everyone knows that this is that same location that Buckingham Landing wanted us to move to, but the lawyer that they have gotten to represent them is already on litigation, or some, whatever word you want to use, like Brittany said, on this property for the Turner's. So just so we're on the same page when we talk about this ferry, it's happening in the future, I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, I believe that we asked that attorney that specific question, what he presented to us, I believe was here in council chambers some time ago. He said no, if I'm not mistaken. So different attorneys, I think, separate property, but there's, there's kind of three different entities there. One is the public boat, what do we call it, dock, right?
This is a pier.
Pier. This is a pier.
Okay, so we got the public pier, we've got the private entity, which is the RV resort and the marina, and then we've got Buckingham Landing, which is separate, obviously, and across the bridge.
Right, so the summary of this particular one is, A, do we want the SCDOT to turn the road over to us? Yes or no? B, if we get the right of way, we now want to talk to Hilton Head, because they own land along both sides of this road about putting a parking lot in of sufficient size to handle the individual traffic that would want to park and be able to go out onto this pier.
Yeah, and I don't think one is tied in necessarily to the other. If we don't get the right of way, we can still negotiate to put that imperious parking lot over there to let people stroll up to the, to the pier.
I would offer on the right of way that, again, this right of way came to the surface because of actual Turner, Neil Turner was the one that made the petition to DOT to turn it private. In that instance, then he would control the interest and there, he could park as he sees fit. Versus it belonging to a public entity, either the county or the town. So the town owns, this is, the county, the RV park, the marina, and the restaurant are all in unincorporated Beaufort County. And then the town municipality starts where they start owning the property out front. So should, should the county not take the interest in the, in the road, then the next right of refusal would be to town of Hilton Head before it goes back to the private individual.
Yeah, I don't think, I wasn't suggesting we not do that, Jared, I was just saying we might have two parallel moves here, anticipating we might get it, and then let's, let's open some discussion with Hilton Head to see if they would let us put in a parking lot on that land, so that more citizens can park there and stroll down and use that pier, that's all. I don't, I'm not saying we shouldn't pursue the right of way.
Chris?
Question on the road. What's going to be the cost to maintain it? How long is it? And does it meet CTC criteria in order us, in order for us to take ownership of it?
It is in good and acceptable condition, so it would meet those conditions. As far as, it's in overall good shape as far as the pavement structure. There's probably some improvements on the shoulder, so it doesn't continue to slop off if, if we want to maintain parking or not. And, and so it would be in line with our other paved roads as far as the cost, the cost of maintenance.
And that is?
I don't have a good number off the spot, but I can get a, it's, it's a, it's a average. We don't have a lot of maintenance responsibility on the cost on a, on a paved road as we do a dirt road. It's more of a, whenever there's a need for resurfacing, we have it in the pipeline.
I think the last number I got was like a million and a quarter per mile.
That would be more on a resurfacing.
Per month, but it's like 10 or 15 years, something like that.
Yeah, and that, and that's for a full, full reclamation of a resurfacing. It's probably, a full resurfacing is probably in, in the six to eight hundred thousand per mile. And that's if you just come with a two-inch overlay, if it needs more work, it gets to the million dollars per mile. If it's just a thin, it can be as long as two hundred thousand dollars per mile.
Cool, okay, thank you.
And it's about, it's a little less than a mile, I'd say it's about eight tenths of a mile.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody is clear on what the direction is for the Jenkins Island boat landing?
Joe, Stu, one question?
Yes.
You know, the vast majority of the, of the land on Jenkins Island is in the town. And it would seem to me that the logical first step is to talk with them, but it's, this strikes me as something that would be better owned by the town than ourselves, since they own basically all of the surrounding land. But I think it's worth talking to them first before we make a decision.
We have had some preliminary discussions with the town. And again, first right of refusal goes to the municipalities.
Sure, well, they get to go first, or not? I thought you were the other way around.
I'm not sure, we'll have to coordinate with DOT. But regardless, when we talked to them initially, I don't know that they were in a position, just talking with their staff, to act as quickly. DOT is ready to turn it over tomorrow. That, that was their position, so I don't know that they were as apt to move as quickly as the county. It doesn't mean that if we take ownership as the county, that we couldn't later coordinate with the town and, and turn it over to the town at a later date. But that way it would maintain as a public, public roadway.
Yeah, it would be our, it would be my recommendation that we, you will, you all may have already authorized us to pursue the right of way from DOT. You'll have to accept that if, once we get to that process. And there's a couple of reasons for doing that. One, most of the complaints that come in about the marina property is people parking along that road right of way and blocking the access, so it could be a public safety issue. Secondly, is if it goes into private control, then our access to that pier may get hindered in some way down the road that we may have to fight an additional buy-to-law. So it's in our best interest to take over the right of way of Jenkins Island.
Got you, okay. All right, well, that takes care of all of the boat landings.
Chairman, before we go?
Yes.
On the future, if you could, it's not important to issue clarity. Jared, if you could start referring to what is actually out there as a title. For example, instead of saying Jenkins Island Boat Landing, just say Jenkins Island Pier.
You're correct.
And then we know that Boat Landing is not ours.
Yeah, very correct.
And the same thing with the others, so that we know exactly what we have there, and what we're looking at, because it could be very confusing. I was like, Joe, you got how do I get down to that Boat Landing, but that's not our Boat Landing, so you've got a problem with that.
All right, good point.
If I might, Joe?
Go ahead, Gerald.
Yeah, and Brittany, there were some boat landings that weren't included in this presentation. Are we to assume that they're all in good shape?
Well, as you just pointed out, some of our statistics might be a little skewed based on what's a boat landing and a pier. But we do, in fact, I believe have somewhere around 25 to 30 boat landings slash piers throughout the county. Neil Desai and I have gone through all of them, if not nearly all of them, and determined that our, our interest has been secured in those other boat landings or are already being handled in a different manner. So these were the ones we had the largest concern about, and that we need to proceed forward in order to secure that interest in them.
Okay, so as far as maintenance and repairs and things of that nature, then the others will be included in, in that process?
Yes, they, they've been included, and as Jared has stated, that they will also be included in that master plan to be revisited and decided at that time what's needed, what's not needed. But as far as the interest, the interest has been secured on the others in one form or another.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions before we move on? Administration knows what to do at this point in time, and we're very appreciative of you taking on this task and that, you know, you get back to us as soon as you can.
I will.
Okay, item number seven is a discussion and direction from council on recreation facilities that are not owned by the county.
Good afternoon. At this point in the conversation, I think it's pretty clear that there are many layers and levels to Beaufort County facilities, who owns what, what the facilities are used for, and how we own them. In particular, what I want to talk about today are four leases. One of them deals with the library system, and the other ones are parks and rec. They're long-term leases. The Libeco Library is the one I want to start with, it's a 25-year lease. It was started in the year 2000, and it expires in December of 2025. The, the idea was, it was an old school, it was easy to get into it, it was fast to establish the library. Fortunately, the building is 60 years old, so we're reaching the end of a 25-year lease in a 60-year-old building. There is an option for the county to extend that lease by 25 years, but I'm not sure that that building will survive another 25-year extension on a lease. We have talked to the school district, I think they're in tune to selling it. What complicates that matter is there are two pieces to the building connected by a breezeway, and there is a second lease by the EEOC on that second building. And the EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, actually occupies that building. So my point in this presentation is just to let you know that these presentations exist, and that, you know, the 2025, in four years, we're going to have to address the issue one way or another. So they need to be included in our facilities master plan, even though the libraries have a separate facilities plan. This is really not, this has not been included in that conversation. So just wanted to make you aware that that's out there.
Does EEOC actually occupy the building?
I think they have right now, it's being used for storage. As far as I know, they, they have plans on cleaning it out. They were looking for a grant to renovate the building underneath their lease and actually move into it. I'm not sure what their status is right now.
Okay.
So the second one is our pools. We have four pool locations, one of them we own, that's our Lynn Brown, that's on Green Street downtown, about a quarter mile from where we are now. And then we, that's an uncovered outdoor pool. Then we have three other pools that are covered pools. One is at MC Riley Elementary School in Bluffton, one is at Battery Creek High School in Burton, and the other one is at Beaufort High School. That lease was entered into in August of 2000. The school district gave us the land and the county built the pools. So you can imagine a 20-year-old pool, they have a number of issues. We have gone through, we did some emergency maintenance, if you will, for resurfacing the pool, because it was getting dangerous. We've done that in the last year. But the larger issue, two parts to it. The structures that cover the pool, because it's such a corrosive environment, have structural issues. So we are, at Public Facilities Meeting next month, there's a proposal to have a consultant come in and do a full assessment of the building so that we know exactly what we're looking at if we choose to repair the building. It's going to be expensive to do that, my guess would be 800,000 plus per location. If we did that and extended the lease, then we would continue operations as we have. They're limited in their size, they only have six lanes in each one. I know you've seen the emails about capacity and use, and there's a lot of demand for pools, and there's just not enough lanes to go around, to be quite honest. So we're going to be forced with a decision of repairing the pools and extending the lease for another 25 years, or ending the lease and finding an alternate place to put pools. So that conversation is, is coming up. The lease is up, if we choose to turn them over to the school district. Uh, so that conversation is is coming up. The lease is up. If we choose to turn them over, uh, to the school district, I'm not sure what condition we can turn those over in, or if we have to demolish them, or what would result. But I'm certain that we could not just turn them over in the condition they're in now without some expense.
Can we ask questions? Do you want us to wait till the end?
No, go ahead. That's fine.
So the three covered pools, eight hundred thousand dollars each to?
That's a guess.
A guess. The school district uses them for swim classes, or they did prior to COVID.
They do.
Um, do you know, do they use all three of them for, um, classes?
Yes, ma'am.
For elementary school?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think back when they were built, that was the idea, teach every child in Beaufort County how to swim, because we're surrounded by water. Um, if I'm not mistaken, that was the original plan when they did the one at Beaufort High. I remember that. So, um, what, any conversation with the school district about what they would do with that program if they, if we got out of the business or?
A few sidebar conversations and and my feel of it is they don't want us to give them back broken pools. So if they do, you know, they they would have to assess how much it costs to to rebuild the pool and make it. If we want to keep them and you, you know, use them right on and keep the partnership going, that's going to be an expensive proposition. Somebody's going to have to repair them. Or do we want to look at an alternative where we abandon these pools and locations, demolish them, and then go somewhere else in the county and build a larger facility or two or three? You know, that's, but even that is a very expensive proposition. So this is coming. The lease is up in a few years. And, uh, these are questions that we're going to have to find.
And then the other open door pool and the other public pool in the county, um, correct?
Lynn Brown's the only one. And it's in good repair. We put some money in that over the last couple of years, and it's.
Of course, it's limited to the summer.
That's right. That's right. And the value of the colored, the covered pools is when school is in session, you can use it for the swim teams. You have year-round swim team activities. You have year-round, uh, exercise, you know, lap swimming in the pool.
Right, lap swimming, water aerobics.
Things of that nature. So again, more question marks and periods at this point, but just want to make you aware that this needs to be part of the facilities conversation, even though it's on school property. They're our pools. They are in desperate need of repair, and the lease is coming to. It's it's coming to an end. So any other questions about the pools?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, in in general, is the best location for a pool to be co-located at the school in general?
So there's two ways to look at that. Um, there's parking already there. It's an established location. The school district, they have the kids there. They're close proximity. They want to use them. Uh, but it has its limitations where, and and this is just, for instance, it's very hypothetical. If we were to build a very large pool facility, an outdoor aquatic facility at our Bluffton Rec Center, it could accommodate many more people, but it would be expensive to do that. If we did it uncovered, it would be something that we could do, um, you know, for for less expense, but if we wanted to make it year-round and have an Olympic-sized swimming pool that's covered, then you get into the millions of dollars very quickly.
So it sounds to me like we're down to that we really need new pools, and it's just a matter of where we want to locate them.
Yes, sir. And, you know, we we have put money in the pool decks and some of the pool equipment. It's the structures and the mechanical systems that are, uh, in those pools after twenty years. It's a corrosive environment, and it's just run its life cycle. It just, it just so happens that when all of this was entered to twenty years ago, it's sort of a temporary solution to a permanent problem. And now we're left resolving all of these issues twenty years later.
Yeah, it sounds to me like the maintenance cost is is probably outrunning the bonding cost to building something new.
It's burdensome. I'll say that.
Chuck, Chuck, if I if I might say, having the pools located in the schools, I think from the school district's, uh, position, um, is a cost saving for transportation and travel. So so, um, if you look at building one Olympic-sized pool anywhere, then that's 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 going to cut into having to load the kids on the bus, having to transport them to the, to, so all that's time lost. When if you just had the pools at the school, it's time saved and, uh, it's to the benefit, uh, of a cost saving for the for the school district.
Sure. And I think it all comes down to to dollar science, really. I mean, could we, uh, renovate, expand the pools there if the school district is so inclined to allow us to do that? Certainly, we could. But now we're getting into, you know, millions of dollars per location because it's a do-over. Uh, so it's either going to be spend a lot of money on the pools to renovate them, spend a lot of money on the pools to renovate and expand them where they are, or spend a lot of money to build one in a different location and make these pools go away. Uh, Mr. Cunningham has his hand up.
Yeah, um, maybe this is, um, an opportunity to sort of piggyback that thing. Joe, Mr. McKellen, and Eric, and myself can kind of, you know, kicking about another rec center. I know we talked about a very large complex to compete with Charleston, Middle Beach, helping their tourism here and for us to be able to use in the off-season for the rest of our community. Maybe this is the opportunity to design something like that in there, Olympic-sized pools and be able to hold those tournaments there. Or maybe it's an opportunity to put more ball fields there and do the Olympic-sized pool, like you said, over at the Bluffton Rec Center area, or a covered-sized pool, something along that. Obviously, we're super early into that project, um, but it's just something to throw out there for people to think on. Two birds, one stone makes sense to me always, so.
Sure. I mean, my personal take is I like to have a little of all of it. Um, I would like to have a really large outdoor facility and state-of-the-art indoor facilities in many locations. Uh, in in addition to that, and I know this is separate from the conversation, I would like to have uh, aquatic facilities that generate income for the county, such as water park, splash pad, uh, things of that nature. A lot of communities do that because they do generate a lot of revenue. But again, I don't, I don't want to get sideward too far down on that. But, um, just just know that this lease is coming to an end. Um, these questions are going to come up sooner than later, so I just wanted to make you aware of all of that.
Go ahead, York.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I I like that, uh, concept that Logan just laid out, um, uh, particularly if we've really did, um, left. We got a lot of, um, entire county could benefit from that, um, on scale. Um, but Chuck, um, can you give us at some point in time the, uh, history of maintenance on all these pools? I know we have allocated and spent, spent money on these, on the, on the maintenance of these pools. Could you just sort of go back, I don't know, maybe five, ten years in this, give us a history of uh, the cost that we have actually pulled into these pools, uh, over the years? That's all. Thank you.
Sure. I, there are limitations to how far I could break that down, but I can, I can tell you what I I know. Um, the the pool decks, we're looking at sixty, seventy thousand bucks apiece. We've done three of them in the last year. Uh, we are constantly having issues with pumps. Those are expensive, um, in the thousands. Uh, the HVAC systems, uh, are twenty years old. They're shot. That's in the hundreds of thousands. Um, and as far as the burden for maintenance, Mark and his crew are constantly having to go and and patch these systems because they're old and and quite frankly, just broken. Uh, I hate to be so harsh with that, but that's that's the reality of where we are.
Uh, yeah, you you you're going into the future of what needs to be done now, which is asking how much we've spent over the years.
No, that's, no, that's that's current. That's current.
Oh, you, we we spent, uh, the HVC already pay for that?
So it's, it is current. It is broken as we speak. We're waiting on a part to come in at the Bluffton Pool so that it can be up. Uh, these are, these are issues today, so it's current.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure what the expense is, but anytime any of those systems break, it's in the thousands. It's very expensive to fix them. And then there's lead times. Um, so, yeah, they're they're broken now, and the the maintenance cost is rather high.
My pool's been broken for three months now. My neighborhood is saying.
Yeah. So. You you've, um, you've hit the nail on the head. At some point in time, there is a life cycle for pools. No matter what, they just wear out. And so now we're at that point. It's, we need the pools, obviously, but we need the next generation pool. And that's what you have to develop for us. What will the next generation pool look like for the next twenty-five years?
Yes, sir. I I completely agree. And, uh, when we report back with that, I will also include, uh, the increase in capacity that we've seen uh, with swim teams and, um, the popularity of swimming and aquatic sports. So, um, I'll be.
Yeah, and 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 again, um, just what Logan had said before, we've been kicking around the idea of a recreation center, um, that can draw a lot of people to this area that really, if we have the land, where we have, we have the people, they will come. And we're, you know, um, Jasper County or Hardyville just put up a rec center for their population, and they are booming. They they thought, well, maybe a hundred people would sign up in the next six months. They got two hundred and fifty people to sign up in one day. So there is a need out there, a want and a need for facilities that people can go to year-round.
Yes, sir. I completely agree.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on from pools, if no one else has a question about pools, uh, there are two outlying centers. And when I say centers, these are, um, small facilities, one building. Uh, the Booker T. Washington is the first one I'm going to talk to out in Big Estate, which is out in Seabrook. Um, it is about an acre and a half. It has a, it's a building that has a room, a kitchen, a bathroom. It has a playground and a basketball court. That's what's out there. So it is currently under a fifty-year lease. The lease was signed in nineteen seventy-nine. Uh, August of twenty twenty-nine is when, uh, that lease is going to expire. There are options for extending it. The the complicating factors, uh, on this one, the county actually built the facilities uh, under the lease on the land. The land is currently owned by a trust. It is the Big Estate Community and Area Trust. Um, it was signed in nineteen seventy-nine, and as far as we know, there is only one living member of that trust left. At the last Parks and Rec, uh, board meeting, there were community members there. We spent considerable time talking to them about options for this uh, center, and it was indicated that there was one living person, uh, for this trust. And we have a meeting out at this center tonight at six o'clock, uh, to continue that conversation. And we are in hopes that we can acquire this land and own it. Uh, because, as you might imagine, a forty-year-old facility is reaching the end of its life cycle. So we're going to have to clear this one up before we can, uh, make any facility investments. Uh, because what we don't want to do is have an open-ended lease that ends in twenty twenty-nine with no clear ownership of the property. Uh, in the interim, we're patching the building. Uh, we don't want to put a whole lot of money in it until we sort out the ownership and the lease. Uh, so after tonight's meeting, I'm hoping that we will have a clear resolution and path forward from a legal standpoint to take ownership of the building so that we can improve it. Uh, we're looking at a couple of options for programming. Uh, this morning I had a really good conversation with our library director. Uh, she indicated that in addition to the LaBico Library, they would like to have resources out farther uh, in the Yemecy and Big Estate area, and possibly we could co-program this. It's it's, uh, early in its development. But we're, we're looking for, uh, a way to own the building and then improve it and increase the level of service that we provide in that area. Any questions about that one, the Booker team? So the next one is on St. Helena Island. It is the Scott Community Center. This is a one-acre parcel. Uh, the lease is for a one-acre parcel. The actual site is more of about four acres. It's one building, two rooms, a kitchen, a bathroom. The county has put in ball fields, tennis court, basketball court, and lighting. Um, the lease, it's a twenty-five-year lease, again, that was started in, uh, two thousand. You can kind of see the theme of the the line of reasoning behind a lot of these things back twenty years ago, and they all sort of happened at the same time. Um, but it is owned by the Young Men's Social Club. This lease expires December of twenty twenty-five. And the question with this one, we do not, th- this is an active community group that still reserves the right to use the building, and they dictate the, uh, programming that we put in the building. Uh, there's been a lot of pressure from both the Big Estate and, uh, the St. Helena, the Scott community in particular, for programming. The issue with programming at this particular location is the programming has to be done by the county proper. So it is specifically written in the, uh, lease that if we want to do programming with a third party, um, to to contract it, they have to approve, this group has to approve that activity. And there is some difference of opinion of of who should do the programming. Um, there are certain groups that want to use it, uh, and this particular group says no. So and then there's, uh, other requests for services out there that the county really can't support at this time. So that one's coming up. If, um, if we choose to, um, extend the lease, we probably want to have a conversation about what the terms of that extension would be. Uh, in addition, there's nothing in the lease that says we are bound to maintain that property. Yet there was a building that was damaged in Hurricane Matthew, and the county is being asked to rebuild, rebuild that building, which was an existing building on the site, I believe, when the lease was signed. But we're not really obligated to do that, and if the lease is going to expire and we don't own the property, we don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars, um, building buildings and then have the ownership transfer back if we decide to get out of the lease. So that's kind of where we are, uh, with these four leases. Again, it's it's more for information, letting you know that they're out there. Um, so when the conversations come up, you, um, it it's not a surprise.
Chuck, do they also own the 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 property for the tennis court? I mean, the basketball court and the baseball fields too, so we're maintaining those and and doing that as well?
We are, and in my reading of the lease, the lease is for a one-acre section of what they own. Well, over time, it's sort of expanded. Yes, we we maintain the ball fields. We've put lighting out there. Um, so it's it's all part of the deal at this point. Um, the Young Men's Social Club, they they do have gatherings in the buildings. They utilize it. And the county, uh, before COVID, had programming. We had after-school and senior care, which we plan on re-establishing that in the area. Uh, just not sure, uh, how we're going to approach this because the lease expires here pretty soon, the next four years. So any other question?
Uh, second, let me ask you this. Um, do the county own any of the land in that area at all?
I I couldn't understand you, sir.
The land itself, does any of the land of that hundred acres owned by the county? Does the county own any of the land?
No, we don't. We don't own any of the Scotland at all.
You don't?
As far as I know, no, sir.
Okay. Um, I I think that, um, and if you cannot hear me at this time, uh, I may need to just go ahead and type it in the chat room. So you having a difficulty hearing me?
I can, I can understand you. I can hear you. Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I think we need to go ahead and start the negotiation with them about extending. Um, I think this community, uh, this area has been served forty years, and I think for us to just continue any effort at this time, um, would probably be, uh, traumatic. Um, at the same time, um, I agree that we should not, uh, spend money on the building itself. Let's be basically have, um, an agreement to move forward. Um, the other thing that I would, uh, ask you do is, um, make sure that if there is a denial for the use of that building by any group, that we are not discriminating. They're not discriminating, making sure that there is an objective reason for not allowing another group to come in there. But it cannot be on discrimination. It has to be objective. I can't tell you, I I don't even imagine, I can't even imagine if somebody's requesting use of it, for them to be denied. Um, you know, I can't, but, you know, if they have a legitimate reason for denying, um, and if they, they continue to, you know, set back precedent, that's one thing. But if it's subjective, then I have, I really do have a problem, um, with that. So just make sure that, um, um, that is all negotiated as you move forward. Um, if they have the right to deny, then it has to be objective denial.
Yes, sir. Understood.
That makes sense.
It does.
Yeah. For example, if you claim, if the. For example, if the Klangs, if the Klangs want to use that facility, I can understand them saying no. You know, so, you know, that's an extreme use, uh, but, uh, an example, but I, you know, I can understand them saying no to that, but just because I'm white and you're black and you, you can't use it because of that, I think that's discrimination.
Understood, yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question. Many years ago, there used to be organized sports out there, but there's not anymore, correct? Is there any organized, um, Parks and Rec activity, sports?
So I think the facility before COVID is being used for practices, but most of the,
Games would be.
The, the games are done at Wesley Felix.
Mm-hmm.
And, I mean, we put a million dollars in Wesley Felix a couple of years ago and it's a very, very nice facility. So practices and actual game days are, are there.
Okay, thanks.
If there are no more questions, that concludes my presentation. No, we own that one, we're good with that one. Oh, okay, yeah, that's, uh, that's actually Cusaw. Uh, there's another lease for, I don't have a copy of that lease, but it's going, it's a, I think it's up in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four. At Cusaw, there is a small center, it's, it's a, I believe it's a one-room building and there's a little playset out front. It's, there's not much there. I think there's a basketball court there. That we leased the building, but we don't currently program or use the building. It's only used at this time for, um, events by the, the host group, the, the owners of the building that we lease it from and the, um, the election commission uses it for elections. So when that one comes forward, uh, we'll, we'll have a discussion about whether we need to continue that lease or not.
All right, what about, uh, Pre-Carrie?
Uh, that's Broomfield and we own that one. That one's ours, we control that one. We own the building and the ball fields for us, I know. No other questions, that concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any further action to come before the committee?
No, sir, we're done unless you all have anything for us.
Okay, any comments from council members before we leave?
Thank you very much for digging deep in all of this. It's been very interesting, to say the least.
Yeah, to say the least. Or lease, or leases. Okay, so no further action, we will adjourn the meeting at three forty PM. Thank you all for attending.